Tuesday, 3 December 2019 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. Short invocation. Thank you dear Lord that all the people in this country are free. May we never allow anything or anyone to change that. You have been generous to this nation and blessed it, and for that we are humbly grateful. Roll call, please.
Trustees head?
Here.
Leaf?
Here.
Matts?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. Item two is review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of 5 November and special village board meeting of 19 November. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any additions, corrections, or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three, comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that has something to bring up for the board? Hearing none. We'll go on to item four. 2019-2020 Class A liquor license and Class A liquor cider only license. QuickTrip, 935, discussion, approval requested.
Stan, I still move to approve the Class A cider only license for QuickTrip?
Cider only, okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Discussion?
Can he go up top?
All right.
We can share.
We can share.
We're friendly. We share.
We can.
Hi, good evening. Attorney Andrew Nelson with Nelson and Lindquist Law Office here in Hudson. Excuse me. We've been hired to represent QuickTrip in requesting that you not only approve the cider license, but also the Class A liquor license. What I've handed out here is just an indication of exactly what QuickTrip is planning on putting in as far as the liquor goes and the wine. First page there is a, I think it's a 40-inch by 60-inch shelf that goes right behind the counters. Most of the items there, except for the items on the very bottom shelf, are not the full-size liquor bottles. They're the, either the mini bottles or the, what's known as a fifth, basically, fifth of a liter, my understanding. They're not asking to be, you know, converting their, they're not going to be converting their store to an entire liquor department, liquor store, or anything like that. This is strictly a convenience offering. One of the issues with QuickTrip is that they work very hard to maintain consistency with their stores. And so somebody coming up through Iowa at a QuickStar, through Minnesota at a QuickTrip, into Wisconsin at a QuickTrip, they're going to see the exact same thing in the same location and know exactly where to go in every same, every store that they stop at. And that's just part of their brand. It's part of their customer experience. And so the reason why QuickTrip is asking to have this small liquor department and offer the wine is to maintain consistency with their stores, so that somebody expecting to be able to pick up a small bottle, or a fifth, or even one of the full bottles for the very minimum products that they offer there is to maintain that consistency with their customers.
What percentage of their stores have liquor license?
You know that?
I don't have that figured.
Would you guess? Half? Two-thirds?
I'd say probably closer to two-thirds, if not more.
There's, I think, only five, five or six stores, I was told this evening on a phone call with Will Churchill, that offer like a separate entrance. There are some municipalities that require separate entrances. And so those facilities, because of the fact that they have to add on a completely new addition to the building, will offer a slightly wider selection, but that's certainly not the case with North Hudson here. I've read the couple of letters that were presented to the board for the November 5th meeting. I mean, these are all things that you guys know. There is no ordinance that prohibits a limitation on these licenses at all, but these letters are asking that this board prohibit, based on the number of licenses already issued. They raise a couple of concerns such as health, safety, or welfare of village residents and that type of thing. Again, if there's no ordinance that limits the competition or the number of locations selling liquor, wine, or cider, it seems that attempting to limit it by not granting an application that has been approved by law enforcement through the background check process seems to be a much different procedure than what we would normally expect in the applying for and otherwise issuance of a liquor license. Liquor licenses are pretty standard. You apply for them. If you meet the application criteria, then you're generally approved unless there's an ordinance that would allow for that limitation. So I think that if there was an ordinance that was limiting the ability to sell liquor, certainly QuickTrip could have made a much more informed decision on locating here, but there is no ordinance that does so. And so that was part of their process anyway in trying to figure out where they wanted to build.
If that was part of their process when they're deciding to build, why did they wait so late to turn this part in?
I think it's just part of the application process, when the applications are due and the time that it takes to provide it. There was a letter of intent that was provided sometime in 2018. They reference hot and cold food and beverages, which I think covers liquor, beer, anything else. Again, it's a letter of intent, but there was never a question made about issuing or otherwise clarifying any potential questions on that letter of intent at all that I could see, and maybe there's information I'm not aware of, but...
Well, they mentioned cigarettes they knew they needed a license for, you know, in the letter of intent, but the other things with licenses, I mean, they didn't make any mention of that. And through the state, licensing is a privilege, it's not a right. So I'm curious, just because there isn't an ordinance there, I mean, it's up to the board to decide if they think this is a good fit or not, you know? And I agree with Kirk, is that it came in kind of late, you know? We didn't have any information on this until, what, a month and a half before this store was going to open, so that was kind of taken aback that way. I think that's part of the questioning of the deal. I cannot be involved in it, but I just thought I would correct us that licenses don't have to be granted. We've got lots of places, Madison, different places, where they've refused licenses because of, you know, the amount of people or amount of licenses in that area where they haven't, you know, they disallowed it, but then they moved to another location and they said, yes, your license is fine. And that's the only issue that I think is brought up in the letters that you have referenced is that it's an off lot in just that one small area.
In North Hudson?
Correct.
The north side of town. But, I mean, if anybody walk, you know, drives or walks from the bridge all the way here, it's completely residential up until the last couple of blocks of town. I'm not aware of any other location that anybody would have in North Hudson to build a facility like that or any other, you know, convenience store that would obviously see the number of cars, traffic, and that type of thing that are going to come through. I don't know that that's necessarily a great reason to deny an application either, just simply because that's the layout of the town, really.
The whole density to the one local area, I mean, that's our business district per se.
Sure.
Any other questions for...
I know that there was a comment or a question on the November 5th meeting that if you approve the liquor license, is that going to result in them ultimately, you know, adding to what they offer? Is this liquor department then going to expand? Is it going to become something other than what's been presented here? Again, there's no such thing as a rogue QuickTrip store. They don't invest the billion-plus dollars that they have into producing their own product, the urge product, their own meat product, their own dairy products, those types of things, just to turn around and take those things off the shelf and sell liquor that they're not producing and they're not making. It's just not their policy. It's never happened in any of their stores where they have obtained a license and then turned a gas station into a liquor store. It hasn't happened. The manager, the management team at one store doesn't have authority to make those changes to a store at all. It's all consistent, like I said, from one store to the next, to the next, to the next. And again, it's going to be a very, very small area that they're asking for.
I have a question.
Yep. You can go up there, state your name, and give us your question. Your name and address, please.
I have one for you.
Sure.
He's getting ready to take over.
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Tracy Whiteley, and I live at 317 Station Lane North. My question is just, does the QuickTrip up on the hill by the McDonald's there, does that have a liquor license? Do they sell liquor there?
No. Hudson has an ordinance that doesn't allow them to state that.
Yeah. No, I can address that. Hudson has an ordinance that they limit liquor license, or off sale to, I don't know, 2,500, every 2,500 people. So I think that's what it is, and their liquor stores have, they've got enough liquor stores so they don't have enough room for it to have one at QuickTrip, I believe is the reason they don't have one there.
The other reason is that that was a converted store. QuickTrip had purchased that. I forget if it was a BP at one point.
So.
But the lot there doesn't really allow for them to have the full services that they would otherwise offer.
Anybody else? Questions? Comments? I guess we'll call a question. We have a motion to approve the cider-only license. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I can't, I'm abstaining.
Abstain?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cider-only. There's also the Class A liquor license. Is there a motion to approve the full, or the Class A liquor license?
I move to approve the full Class A liquor license.
I second.
Okay. Is there a further discussion?
I just fully expected, when QuickTrip was coming to town, it being, I've seen this in other stores, I didn't expect that they wouldn't sell alcohol. So, I don't know. It seems that we don't have an ordinance against it, so it seems arbitrary for us to just select them out of the blue to not have it.
Well, none of our gas stations have liquor.
But we don't have an ordinance against it.
Yes.
And did Freedom apply for it? I mean, I don't know. I'm new to the board compared to that.
I'm just saying, none of them.
So if they did, then what will we say to them?
Well, just depending on what we say today.
Right.
Well, if Freedom would prize for it, then we'd automatically approve it according to your argument.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't have an ordinance against it.
Neither do you, and we don't need to have the ordinance.
Well, Stan, we're just not going to agree on it, okay? And that's democracy in action.
You're going to vote on it, it isn't going to be me. Anybody else? Tim?
Comments, you mean, you're looking for?
Comments, or...
I mean, it doesn't stop all of them from going and applying for liquor license either at this point.
All right, so do you want to take the vote now? Is there other further discussion or talk back? Anything?
I have no more discussion.
What's that?
I have nothing else for this discussion.
All right, so the vote, yea or nay?
No.
No.
Abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
So you got one, two, three, no, and two, yes? Is that what I got? So the Class A for the hard liquor license fails. The cider license is approved. Item five, adoption of ordinance five, 2019, model ordinance for adoption of Wisconsin Electrical Code, approval requested.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And this is to comply with the state?
Yeah. What I did is I took that model ordinance that was a little over-inclusive because it talked about, you know, appointing a building inspector and that, which we already have. So I took the provisions of that ordinance and just incorporated it into our existing code.
Okay.
So it should be compliant.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the adoption of ordinance five, 2019? Signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item six, 2020 Home Mobile Park License, Pamela Zappa, approval requested.
The application wasn't filed yet, so there's nothing to vote on yet.
Okay.
She hasn't filed it and...
She has until what, the end of the month?
Yeah. There's some issues in the mobile home park, too, that need to get addressed.
Okay.
So I'm not sure, I mean, it'll be January 7th, and then it's...
What does that mean?
Yeah, when does your license run out?
End of December.
I thought, yeah. I remember voting on this every year.
So would those issues have prevented her from...
Well, it could have been contingent, I guess. Approval contingent on that being addressed.
So then what happens? We aren't meeting again?
Are we going to end up having a special board meeting on Christmas?
License expires, and you have your board meeting on Christmas Eve.
Thanks, Bob.
So we would have to come together in a special?
What happens? Her permit expires in a December, and our next meeting is January 7th.
Well, it's going to expire if she doesn't apply for a new one.
What does that mean, if it expires?
She's out of compliance.
She won't be able to operate. I mean, you're not practically going to tear out a bunch of trailers in a week, but, you know, she needs to get an application in, on file ASAP.
Which I've sent to her, yeah.
So does she get a fine or something for operating without a license, or what happens? What's the...
I don't know. I'd have to look at the code closer on that.
Send him the chief over, or...
All those new police officers. He's got backup now.
Okay. So we're tabling that one, right?
Well, she doesn't have the license, then we have to, but I wonder if we can...
Right now, special meeting, I guess.
It's on the agenda. I'm wondering if, like Melissa stated, if we could make some type of a motion contingent of them completing the license and all other activities that are required to be done, right? I mean...
We don't even have the application or the fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, why would you go out and help them?
Right. I mean, at least if we have the application and fees, but we don't have that. So I don't see how you can...
Couldn't the motion be based off of that?
I think this is a her problem.
She didn't get the paperwork in. Why are we, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I mean, it's, she doesn't have the paperwork in, so I don't see how you can...
I mean, I understand you're trying to be helpful.
Well, it's understandable that she's been operating this mobile home for a number of years.
I get it.
She knows when it expires.
I know that. I know.
Has she ever expired before?
I'm not giving any preferential treatment here, but the state, and the fact is that she is, you know...
You been here how long?
Okay.
Almost seven years.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we run into people not getting stuff in for Pepper Fast on time, as you well know.
Mm-hmm.
It puts, it backs her up. I mean, she ends up having to scramble.
Whenever we renew her license, her permit at the end of the year, I always, I send her the permit plus the application for the next year. And then I also resent it to her again and tell her it had to be filed by December 1st. So...
I mean, is she reachable? Is, she's not sick or anything in the hospital, or...
I don't know. I don't, I can only babysit so much.
That's weird.
Okay, we move on.
Yeah, that's nothing we can do about it right now. Hopefully she'll get the stuff in in the next couple of weeks. Okay, item seven, election inspector appointments, 2020, 2021 term approval requested.
Stan, can I move to appoint the following Republican and Democratic election inspectors? Cheryl Anderson, Meredith Berg, Betty Goodwin, Joyce Law, Cecilia Phillips, Nancy Walls, Jean Scheffland, Karen Crowley, John Borup, Jennifer Borup, Mary Ann Hanley, Jean Schneider, Margaret Wopat, Sandra Ludkey, Deb Monakin, Kathy Roberts, John Krizik, Sarah Dobins, Judy Segwin, and Carol Harden for the term of January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2021, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name.
You did well. Second. That's why I didn't make the motion. I'm like, somebody else...
Why did I try to read that one?
I'm with something listed, and it's printed.
Well done. Okay, the motion was made, and seconded. Is there any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion for the election inspector appointment, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Item number eight is new business from the board or staff, and that's, first is president's comments, and as everybody is well aware, in the last week, 10 days, we've had that winter rearing its ugly head again, and again, we need to remind folks that we have a very small public works team that does their utmost best at trying to clear the roads, but we need some cooperation with the folks that they, you know, if they could all park in maybe one side of the road, you know, if they know there's an event coming up, or if they can get them off the road, that would be huge. I mean, you know, everybody wants, you know, they've, you know, they talk about curb-to-curb. Well, we can't do curb-to-curb if we've got cars, you know, plugging the edges and then it thaws and melts and freezes again, and then they're like running into concrete barriers. So if you would please, you know, do your best to keep your vehicles off the streets when there's a snow event coming up. Yes, there weren't a lot of snow, but they were very heavy wet snows, and we've tried not to write an ordinance in order to have fines and tickets being written for that. We have a 24-hour move-your-vehicle ordinance that we will be working on, but please, we need everyone to help us, the public works, the police officers and stuff, because the slippery roads and stuff like that are, you know, they're hazard to everyone. So please do your best with, you know, to keep your cars and vehicles off the roads and move them when you can so the guys can get their jobs done. And then the only other thing I have is I want to wish everyone a safe, happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and a very Happy New Year. Melissa?
The spring election will be Tuesday, April 7th of 2020. Anyone who is interested in running for village trustee can pick up the necessary paperwork at the village hall. The deadline to file paperwork is 5 o'clock PM on January 7th, 2020. There'll be three trustee positions on the ballot. Incumbents are Philip Matts, Brian Pike, and Tim Zeiss. That's all I got.
Melissa? Okay. Item number nine is plan commission, and they did not meet.
No.
Item 10 is personnel and finance committee meet. Recommendations, claims approval requested.
Stan, can I recommend the board to approve the December 2019 non-recurring claims of $23,320.24?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Kathy?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you. All right. 2020 contract discussion approval requested. Number one is animal and pounding services with Woodbury Animal Humane Society.
Stan, can I move to approve the Animal Humane Society contract for 2020 with the new fees that we see in front of us?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any comments or questions? Just a slight increase in some of the fees, I believe was there. Everybody saw that packet, and that's where our animals, if they're picked up by our new Daryl Hall...
Starting in January, yes.
Starting in January, the animals will be delivered there. Item two, building inspector zoning administrator...
We got to vote, huh?
Oh, we got to vote. We forgot to vote again. Tim?
Yes.
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 Okay. Building inspector zoning administrator contract, Brian, word. Is there a motion?
Stan, can I move to approve the independent contractor agreement between the building inspector and zoning administrator and the Village of North Hudson for 2020?
Thank you. Ryan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there comments or questions? Hearing none. Building inspector, all in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 11 is public works chair update. Brian?
Stan, we did meet. We have nothing to bring forward for this board meeting, but we do have one item on the ridges, and I'd like to move to approve the, let's see, how do I say this? The original letter of credit amount that we had was $535,700, and they are asking us to change that letter of credit amount to $145,000.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you. Phil? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion for the letter credit reduction, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 12, public safety committee chair update.
Stan, we did meet, and we have one motion to bring forward to the board. I move to authorize the purchase of two Panasonic FZ55 laptops and two Gamber Johnson CF54 docking stations from Baycom with installation by EAT Inc. in an amount of not to exceed $6,100 from the 2019 Police Department budget.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
So, just one question. Why Panasonic is all I wanted to know.
We have that.
Basically, it's because of what we've used in the past and our current, the two laptops that we currently have and docking stations are the Panasonic C54s, and so everything will work well together.
Yep. Okay.
Rugged laptops allow you to...
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that's a purchase request, Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Item 13, public welfare committee chair update.
We didn't have a meeting.
Okay. How about park board?
We didn't meet, but I have, we have to replace Frank Halverson, so if anyone here has any good candidates to join the park team, please just email me or just let me know. And then that's it.
All right, thank you. Let's see, item 15, the board may convene into closed session per statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding department heads' vacation, balance, and related compensation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Y'all are free to go.
We got to vote for it.
Oh, and a vote? Yeah, okay. All in favor of going into closed session, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, we're free convening into open session from closed session, and we have or exercises responsibility regarding department heads vacation balance and related compensation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Y'all are free to go. Oh, and a vote? Yeah, okay. All in favor of going into closed session, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're free convening into open session from closed session, and we have a action item for apartment heads, the chief's vacation balance, related compensation. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
Stan, I move to approve a one-time payment to a department head for up to a hundred hours due to special circumstances and the inability to use the accumulated time accordingly.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Tim?
Yes.
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 Okay, and item seventeen is we are adjourned at seven forty-three.
Thank you.